Okay, everybody here? Be in for it.
Let's wait, Mike to move.
So normally you would make a little presentation, but I've noticed here for the hearing.
Yeah, the only thing I had asked is might consider asking solar projects in the future. And if they have, that I have to just say, or just read in the your comments.
Like that's how I can see your needs.
There's a sign and sheet right there.
Is that someone you ever have to do?
Oh.
Yeah. Maybe you'll have to give a little final.
We didn't do that.
That's three.
We have John.
Four.
Four.
Everybody here?
Yeah, John?
John's muted.
I am here.
Excellent.
Oh.
Is your?
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay, well, I'll pull the meeting to order. And first order of business is. I forget the name of the one. So. And we're here for a public hearing. So open the public hearing and can you just give a brief description of the project? Just introduce yourselves and just give a brief announcement.
Well, Cara puts the site plan up. I'm Jeff Martin with Norwich Solar. This is Cara Moody with Stantec. And Stantec's been assisting us with the permitting process on this project. Quick background on us, we're been around since 2011. We do everything related to solar. So do the development and permitting work as well as the engineering procurement and constructions. We build the projects that we permit and design. And then we also have a division called Runtime Solar that operates and maintains the projects that we build as well. We do projects throughout Northern New England, so Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont. This project is off of Main Street. It's about a megawatt project, as you can see, situated in the.
Cara, you say something, it'll show over there over you. No, no, say something, that's the way the owl works.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, the owl goes to your voice.
Exactly.
Situated in existing open fields here, surrounded by woods on all sides, about setback about 1,000 feet from Main Street. In terms of the process that we've been through at this point, we met with the planning board for initial consultation back in September. We went through a rezoning process, commercial industrial infrastructure district rezoning process. So we have a planning board on that, select board about that. And there was a special town meeting in February where that redesignation was approved. And then we've had a meeting two weeks ago with planning board, and here we are again for the public hearing. Anything else specific to the project?
I'll just add like a couple more details, I pretty much covered it. But just kind of to give a little bit more on the size of the project. So, you know, a megawatt or just under a megawatt might not mean too much to some of you. So the total fenced area of the project is around nine and a half acres. So hopefully that helps just kind of contextualize the size of the project. I think the other solar array in Reedfield is in the 20 acre range, I think. So just for comparison. And then I think just a couple other details I'll add. The project, as Jeff mentioned, is sited in this open field. The parcel was surveyed for wetlands and verticals and streams and all that good stuff. There are no natural resource impacts as a result of this project. No wetlands will be impacted. And then just the other detail I'll mention is the project does require a couple of permits from the state. So we need to get a permit from the main department of environmental protection for decommissioning plan. That application was filed a couple-ish weeks ago, and I gave a copy of that application to Chip. And we also need to get a stormwater permit by rule. And that application was also filed a couple of weeks ago, which means it is due to be approved pretty much any day now. And then we will require a permit from the Department of Transportation for the access off of Route 17. So that application has not been filed yet. So I think, yeah, that's really the project in a nutshell.
The wiring's going to be underground.
The wiring will be underground, so there'll be a couple folds out by Route 17. And then from there it'll run underground along the access drive to the array and to the transformer and such. It'll be right there.
And maybe you could say a little bit about what decommissioning is, what it would look like?
Yeah, sure. So the state has a decommissioning law for solar projects. And then also a lot of towns like Reedfield and other towns that have solar ordinances also have decommissioning requirements. So the project needs to adhere to both state and local requirements for decommissioning. And essentially it just means that when the project has reached the end of its operational life, everything will be removed. So all the panels, the racking, you know, everything will come out. And as part of that process now, like upfront, before the project starts construction, they have to post a bond or some other financial mechanism to cover the cost of decommissioning. So that if, for example, like Norwich were to just disappear and stop operating the project, then the project could be removed with those funds that have been set aside for that purpose.
So this is a public hearing, so if anyone has any questions or comments, it'd be better if you came up here, but you can say it back there. Are there any questions? If you identify yourself too, say who you are.
Well, you live right, Sebastian Wayne.
What's your name?
I'm born here. We live on Sebastian Wayne Dogg Duck, they have a little porch, right? He lives in a house there, my buddy not telling who's down behind us. I don't know why he's not here, but he's speaking out about this. Cause he's building his dream down there. He's, I mean, he bought 25 acres that he built, he's building his own dream. He don't want a barn out there, he don't want a house out there.
What's your concern? Do you have any concerns about yourselves?
Yeah, I can tell him. I mean, you just, I just don't want to hear no noise because we bought that house for a reason. So he's, you don't want to hear no buzzing, right?
Will there be any noise?
Any noise or anything like that?
No, so, and feel free to jump in anytime, but, you know, the panels are only going to generate any kind of noise when the sun is up and they're producing electricity. The sound level that they emit is extremely low. So as part of our application to the planning board back in, or August is when we filed it. But when they, you know, first looked at it in September, we've done a noise assessment and it's included in our application. And, sorry.
Sure does that, it happened, it actually happened.
Yeah, it's another tick. It's my second tick from our sidewalk, so be careful.
Check yourself. I know, I'm probably feeling like I did.
At least that was a dog tick.
Oh, Chip's kind of one too.
I got it.
Did you really?
I haven't found it many, that's actually making me wonder.
Oh, that's a little distracting. So we did a sound assessment that was included in our application. And the sound assessment, you know, takes into consideration the inverters that will be part of the project and the transformers. And so the combined sound level from the project is around 32 dBA when it's generating electricity, so 32 decimals. And that is like the equivalent of like a quiet rural area. I think 40 dBA is the equivalent of a library. And so that would be like if you were standing like right next to the project, so.
But it's, so where's your way for the project, like, you know?
You're, it's essentially silent. Yeah, the other thing to consider too with solar, unlike other forms of development, if there's a commercial development, you might have increased traffic to the area. The only traffic associated with the project would really be during the construction phase. And then once that's complete, we make maybe two to three trips per year. It was really about annual mowing, maybe twice a year we'll mow, and then an annual inspection of the array. If potentially we might need to do more if there needed to be unforeseen maintenance. But generally speaking, it's all monitored remotely, so there's not additional traffic coming to the site.
What's the anticipation on the construction date?
Construction should take somewhere between three to four months roughly.
Thank you. Do you have any other concerns? Do you have any questions?
I'll just ask, Jared, Joe, Wood and Bell Road. I would just ask that you submit your survey as an independent document to the planning board so that we can have that on file and consider, we needed the registry of deeds, just so that you're there. And then for the planning board, any future CID, that might be something that they consider being part of the process is requiring a survey to be registered with deeds. I don't know if that's something we'd like to pursue, but thought it was a point there.
I think when it's approved, it was registered with the registry of deeds.
You had to approve all the CID that was registered.
Yeah, but there is no survey that is registered. So I'm specifically about the survey because I know the town records are perfectly inaccurate, which is not your fault at all. And the surveys are highly accurate. So I would just like to have accurate information that is public knowledge. Cause I know it is in your application, but you can't pull that, you can't really look at it. Yeah, review it for one page, you know, 10 kilobyte file. That really should be a full 10 megabyte file. The data is not really there in the client application. I know it's not required. It's just a suggestion from me. It would be really nice if there was public record of accurate data.
Understood.
Where, the survey was in your application?
Yeah, it's in sheet and this plan said, yep.
Okay, and what do you actually have to do?
I would ask that they send it as a separate individual document. Cause you can't really pull it out of that document of their application and give the full.
Send it, send it to who?
The planning board or something that the public could review.
We have, we have copies of this survey, plan.
Yes, but it's in the document as application as a whole. And so when you try to pull just that piece out, a lot of data is lost. So if they could send it as an independent document, then all that data would be there. But ideally it would be registered with the registered deeds. That way anyone, any time you could just go to the registry and pull yours out of your bank, you'd be like, oh, it is 71 acres. It's always 71, cause I know the town has it, I think that's eight. And you look at the law line, it's nowhere close to what's on your survey. I'm sure your survey is accurate, I trust your survey. That's why I want a register with their registry of deeds, because the town records I know are wrong. Whereas your survey is all right.
Town, everybody?
Yeah.
Town records aren't really way off. They are overlays, okay? And the overlays aren't quite match up. We tell people that, you know, for general knowledge. But in terms of what you're asking for, everything that's been presented, everything that these guys have done is on file and will remain on file, on even lot and map number. And it's also been put in electronic that should probably be online in perpetuity also. I'm not sure if Quebec Valley, Quebec Registry of Deeds does projects like this. It's usually on pure property. They don't own property yet, they're leasing until they get approval. Once that happens, then, you know, I think that might be your main.
So my question to you then would be, who had the survey done? Was it you or was it just the property owner?
We.
Yeah, it's all right.
In which case you guys would be able to, if you chose to register with the registry of deeds.
Yeah, and I mean, neither here nor there on the matter, really. I mean, I imagine if a landowner goes out and buys some land and has their property surveyed, they're not required to record it if they don't want to. So I'm not really sure like why it would be any different for this project, but that I don't.
That's why I don't care. I can ask. And the request, not that you're going to have to do it, because you guys absolutely do not have. I'm not saying that you guys have one, just saying, would you consider it so that we have better access to that type of information?
Certainly a question that I can ask.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
That is it?
You have any other questions?
No.
I just wanted to follow up when we were walking the site. I just commented about the ledge. So it wasn't quite clear to me whether or not you've actually figured out if you can put underground there or.
So we haven't done that geotechnical analysis yet. So it's not something that we would do until we have our permits.
Okay, so this is pending the site being sort of.
To go. You would assume that if need be, you could do some minor blasting, right?
Yeah, right.
For destruction, yeah.
Because of the ledge, that's why we brought up ledge point particularly.
Well, I mean, we just don't know yet because you don't usually do a GM technical survey this early in the process. Even though it's not like super early, we still don't have, you know, our AP permit and we don't have our local permit. So I don't think you've had a geotechnical survey done where you like do like forings and such. So that's what this survey would be to see what the ground conditions are in terms of putting in and.
So is there any other comments?
Don't be anxious.
I have one, you're talking about blast and whatnot. Most of the time they can drill with a pipe and as far as the wire goes, state law, as long as you've got four inches of concrete over it, let's say it was right on top of the ground, as long as you put four inches of cement or concrete encased around the wire. Doesn't have to be under, it has to be over and around by four inches. So if you build a road that high, you don't have to blast anywhere.
So we, yeah, we would need to do everything to meet requirement and like the requirements, CFD requirements. But it's certainly, you know, we've run into ledge on tons of projects in the past, we can, we can make it work for sure.
So are there any other questions from the public? So maybe you're supposed to close the public hearing.
We will close the public hearing.
Second, second. All those in favor? John? So are there any questions?
Hi.
Thanks, John. Are there any questions from planning board members?
We talked at the last meeting about inspections at certain points in time, but I understand we haven't come up with a plan. And the reason for that was with the last project, there were some problems with either the array, the fencing, the maintenance of the site and some other things like that. So maybe more of a condition to be, before you got your building, you came up with a periodic inspection during construction. Sure, we can definitely work this up on that.
Well, I just, if you do that, I mean, we could put a condition of approval saying that there will be a plan submitted for inspections as part of that.
You have any questions? Any questions? So we can maybe have a motion to approve the application as amended, subject to standard conditions, subject to a brief on inspection by them. And I can't figure that in, conditions, I mean. I mean, a lot of, a lot of what you said that you're going to do is in your application and it's, you know, you have to comply with the ordinance. Standard conditions, which we attach to every decision, you'll have to just look through those and see if it's applicable. But all of that, okay, yeah, and you? John, can you think of anything else?
No, I think that, I think that the schedule of inspections is good. I, it seems like the chip could coordinate with them on that.
Should we make that motion? To approve the application as amended, subject to standard conditions and subject to a brief inspection schedule. Second, any discussion? All in favor? John?
Hi. Hi.
Great.
Thank you.
We made it.
Thank you.
I'll take my tick with me.
I feel like I have one coming right now.
I've got TV's down.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I won. Yeah, I guess we'll be doing a big check.
So now we're going to. You want to be outside? A wash. I'm sorry, wait a minute. So the purpose behind that is that if your application's complete, and if it is complete, then we need to notify, but it's scheduled public hearing, schedule site visit. So. One question I had about the application, I didn't look at it carefully, but I didn't see a site plan with the dimensions of the buildings on the, on the site plan or setbacks. I don't know if we have a survey.
I mean, it's not, it's.
I hand it mouth, yeah. Everybody should have a copy right on.
It's handwritten, it's handwritten.
Is it showing, are these the setbacks? I can't tell.
You have.
20 feet to the property boundaries from the.
Yeah, on the two buildings, if you look at it so that where it says parking turnaround is right side up, the two buildings will be at the top of page. And there's a 20 foot upper on the left side, that building's in line, 30 feet on the front of it, and 60 on the back of both buildings. And 20 feet on the other building on the right, that's 20 by 100.
Where's the 60?
And there's 63 feet in between the two of them.
Oh, I see between.
So there's room to pull those buildings in. We went down there and measured it all out, but depending on when you get cutting, especially the trees to the right-hand side, ones to the left is, it's far enough down. No one's going to see anything 20 feet above it, but the one on the right.
You mean this area where you put these two buildings is currently wooded?
Yeah, yes, it is. And I left it that way, I was thinking about cutting it, but I just wanted to wait until this was approved before I just made a giant open spot.
Is the boundary marked by flags or pins or?
Pins, yeah.
So if we get a site visit, we would see the boundaries and we could, you could stake out where the buildings would be.
I can try to stick, but there's just a lot of, there's a lot of trees in the way, so it's really difficult. It's really thick and grown in.
Maybe some flats?
We, I can mark it overall, yeah, yeah.
And so, well, the other, lot of your property is in all wooded?
Yes, yes, it is. There is a place on, let's see, the 50 by 100 building. There's actually a trail on the neighbors property, my line, a bust side of the trail. So there's a 10 or 15 foot path where they skidded wood out of there years and years and years ago. And people have, well, not people, I think it's just because they left enough big trees, nothing is growing in there. So there's almost a trail that heads down towards Camp KV, but it ends at the line. You know, I mean, Camp KV is just an abrupt, it's all woods. But so there's a little bit of space between my property, the trail, and then wooded area of the neighbors. But it, it's all wooded down through there, there's nothing open.
And between the buildings, it's going to be gravel?
Yeah.
And will the buildings open up facing each other or towards the boundary?
The building on the right will open up on both sides of the 100 foot side. The building on the left is just going to have two giant doors on each end of it, and the 50 foot ends, and that's it.
Why is that?
Because it's such a big building. It's meant for cars, boats, you know, bigger stuff. The building on the right is more like a storage room, it's got all the little doors in it.
Will there be any lighting?
On the inside?
No, yeah.
I, when we first initially started this, I said no, and then I said I may put some outside, outside lighting, but it's down off a beaten path, you never going to see it. And it's mostly just for people that show up, so it'll have a, it won't stay on. So if someone happens to show up and it's dust and they can't quite see one, no, when they're driving, it'll come on like the lights do that are at the building there now, and they stay on for roughly 15 minutes and they go out. If they keep moving because they're still there, they'll come back on. I suppose if deer run through the middle of the parking lot, it'll probably come on, but.
So the drive, the road down to the buildings is kind of, it's sandy soil? It's not most time, but.
The, I mean, the road, the road is here now, that goes down that building, it's all bluestone. Yeah, and it's, and it's, well, I don't have that here. But when I get approved for the first building, the one that's.
The 10 by 20?
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't know why this is 10 by 20, it's 100 by 20. But that building, when it was approved, I had, I put a cowl across there, I built a spillway. And I actually added behind the building, I added a underground, basically French drain. Cause there was a lot of water coming out of the hill, so we'll put a French drain in behind that building. It takes all the water and actually pushes it to the right. So the driveway is built, well, it's a nice driveway, it's all, it's all four inch and eight inch minus. We've talked through quarter inch gravel, we've rolled them back, it looks like a normal driveway.
I think it would be good to do a site visit.
What do you want to do?
Do you have any questions?
So the area where the new building will go, what's the slope there like?
There's not much. The building that is just 10 by 20 is. How do I explain that? The buildings that I'm proposing to build are probably going to be four feet lower to five feet lower than the building that's there now. So I'm not going to fill in six or eight feet of fills, ridiculous. So we're going to drop that another level and drive in.
But it is the land where the new buildings will go, is that land fairly level or?
It's fairly level, yeah. It does go downhill by a foot or two. It it does go downhill by a foot or two, you know, it hit, it all hits, but it's not a really. Well, I mean, when you look at the size of, it's a hundred by fifty, twenty by a hundred and sixty-three feet in the middle. And you've got. You know, you've got a few feet to get around the edges of the building, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of dirt there. Not gonna try to blow sunshine in the unknown, it's just a lot, there's a lot of dirt between, you know, sixty. Seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, thirty, that's a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet water.
And the area between, you you're gonna, you're gonna just make that hard pack gravel?
I'm gonna make that gravel. But in between the parking area of the building that's there now, the buildings that are going in, there's going to be. Some kind of a. Water retainment that's gonna end up going underground to the pond, to the catch basin that's out back. So the water's not all facing downhill, it faces both ways. And I built, I I designed this so that. When the parking lot, you know, if we get a really heavy rain, that that. That spillway will catch any gravel before it goes out, and I can peer it out, dig it out. Same thing that we've done on a lot of camp roads.
For that basin where that that one.
Yeah. And that's why I built it then. I mean, at some point, I'd love to pave it, but must be very, it's uh. I don't wanna check more further than this.
I think one uh one issue I see is that, I think there's somewhere in our ordinance where you do these warehouses. They have to be fully screened. With trees and stuff, and if you only have twenty feet, then you're gonna. Probably. Clear everything up to up to the edge of the property. If people are gonna go in and out of that. On the on the twenty by a hundred building, for example.
Yeah.
He said there'd be doors on both sides.
Yeah.
So. Probably clear most of the trees.
Well. In the. And now that looking at it, you're you're absolutely right, but in the proposal, and I told Chip the same thing. I have sixty-three feet, which is way more than enough room, I was planning on leaving twenty feet of trees and whatnot on each side. So that will put me, that'll end up putting the buildings closer together, so you'll have less parking lot in the middle. But um. The one on the left, there isn't as many trees because they're all huge trees. So it's not quite as great a buffer there, you know what I mean? Because they're big, you can see in between them, the one on the right is a whole pile of stuff. It's gonna be hard to see through that.
I guess we'll only do the same as we can.
When we do the site visitor visit, I'll have a. Probably a little bit better layout where the buildings go. And I may have to cut a few trees to do so, but. Obviously, we're not building anything at this point, so cutting a few trees isn't gonna hurt anything, but. It came down to discussion to me and Chip had that if, for some reason, I couldn't get trees enough, and I couldn't get building enough, if I had to make the building smaller. Then I would do so. If I had to take one out. Then I would take one out. I'll do what I have to to make it work.
What's the distance between the two buildings?
Sixty-three feet.
So could you make them closer together?
Yeah, I could make them a lot closer, yeah. And if that's something that you want me to do, and we and you want it all written out, I'll. I'll do so.
The fifty by a hundred building, you said had doors on both ends without on the side?
That's correct.
So could it?
So that building could stay where it is. And the other building could be brought closer to it. I mean. The building on the right, you need you need at least. Eighteen wide, eight feet long, so yeah, you need at least fifteen. Fifteen, eighteen, eighteen feet to get into one of those doors or drive around the building. Fourteen feet would be cutting it, but that would leave you with six feet of trees, which. To me, it really isn't enough, there is quite a few trees on that side. It's something that's a work in progress, and we start cutting trees, if I don't like it, like I said, we're gonna move the building to the left, but if you guys wanna go down and. And stake it out. But that was kind of the plan when we started this, that. Once we've got most of the trees cut, that you guys would come down and take a look and. We would go from there, because I'm not, I'm not opposed to moving these buildings.
On the other side of your property line is the trees of?
Yes, nothing but trees. They're fairly big pine trees, when you get onto the neighbors, I think. Many, many, many years ago, it was probably cut, and then they selected it, because you know, it's it's like a forest, it's nothing. Growing in between the trees, but they're huge and they're tall, so if you look at it, you can see their house, once you get on their property line. But it's not, you know, it's not like you're looking and you can see right through their window, you have to, you have to work to to see that house, and you gotta walk around the tree and kind of look through the woods. So it's, to me, it's pretty wooded up.
John, do you have questions?
No.
Good morning. This is trigger the need for a state. DEP stone water permit.
I'm not, I I. I don't know as far as the size, I don't know the rules, as far as being too close to the water. I'm way beyond that.
Yeah. You took it, of course.
And to keep current with your, they don't really give you a license, just give you a certificate of. Training, and that's what your DEP certification is. I would suspect sooner or later you're gonna be licensed, but yeah, take those classes, but they don't. You have to get more in depth, and you have to take um. I forget what it's called, they have them down in Augusta, but you have to take a different type of class to know boundaries and. You know, it's more pertaining to stuff in the city, which I try to stay out of. Too many wires, too many pipes, and truthfully, too many people.
So I was, I found this slot in the order, and it says all storage activities, including warehouses, should be screened from view from public waves and from a flooding properties. Through the planting and maintaining of natural screening or buffer, and through the site and any such activities and structures. Minimize or eliminate such activities and structures from public view and from the view of a flooding problem.
Well, I've I've seen the same thing, I knew about it, and I knew about it when we did the hundred by twenty unit. And like I told them, if I need to plant trees, and you know, you guys go down there when it's all done, and for some reason you don't like it, you want more trees planted. I got trees.
It it's so low that when he got approved last time. And he came for the second offering, the next new building, people like, why does he wanna do that? He never did the first one. Nobody can see it.
I saw, I saw.
No, nobody can, you can see it when you look hard enough until summer really gets in, and then you're gonna see one corner, but I think he's asking. The property of butters, they go, but. The property of butters would have to go down into the woods. See to see it, you know, they'd actually have to go down in the woods and go, huh. But if they're down that far in the woods, they're gonna see him sooner or later anyway.
You're gonna do the same color as Steve?
Yeah, yeah, brown and green, yeah, because I don't really care what color, as long as it ain't yellow. Or fuchsia or some weird color, but I just do it that way because it matches in with the woods and people can't see it, I mean, they can, it matches in all.
Any other questions?
I was, I was just checking the access. Did I forget what the threshold requirements are, but basically an acre disturbed area. As part of the project, does trigger the need for a state stone water permit?
So.
But I'm not there yet.
You're not there?
At two hundred by two hundred.
So that would include your access road. Your parking, uh we would be looking at your existing building, plus the two proposed building.
Well, the existing building is already existing.
Well, the one above the church, it was a church, right, that was that was there, yes.
Yeah.
But the one down below.
Well, the one down below is now there, and everything that's vegetated is grown in. And I'm not disturbing anything, and the way that's written is disturbed areas, so none of that is disturbed anymore, you know, and it's all been put in place, it's got crush stones, it's got rip rap. And it's got trees, everything's grown up, so now the only thing that's gonna be disturbed. Is. Pretty much. A little bit of a roadway to the building, and then the circumference of the buildings. The building's gonna have to come in. When you look at the drawing and you look at the fact that apparently I didn't um. Didn't measure quite right, I got plenty of room in the middle, but I'm gonna have to bring the buildings in to get the buffer that I want, or that you want, everybody wants. If I brought the edges in at thirty-five feet on each side, that would be uh. Another fifteen feet, that'd be thirty-three, that'd be thirty-three feet in between the buildings, which is more than enough to get into all.
Yeah. What's the basin?
What's the basin? There's a page on here that actually shows you. It's just basically a spillway, it's just a thing to catch the water and drain the water into from. The parking lot, so the parking lot's just not got gravel running out through the woods. You know what I mean? There's a there's a there's a basin made, it's it's.
That's already there?
Well, this there's one, there's a small one for the unit I already built, but there's gonna be another one built. That's separate for the two buildings I'm putting in.
So the water will go into the basin?
Yeah.
And the basin is just crushed stone?
No, the basin is. Basically, what you do is you dig the ground out. And you put sand, minimal sand in the bottom, so the water has a way to get through it, and then you wrap it with stone, like six or eight inch rip rap. And then you make a spillway, so if you get so much water, it can come up out and just run into the woods. Where it's already been going, this there's a place where the kind of water runs through the woods and runs down through all the properties. Um when it really rains out. But that that catch basin is made so that until I get it paved, that any gravel that gets washed. From major stones and go into that. That unit, so that it can be trapped. All areas. It is. It's a good page back. It just gives you a rough idea what it looks like. It looks complicated, but it's pretty simple.
Yeah. So tonight, all we have to do is determine if the applications can bring the butters and schedule site visit. And schedule public viewing. It'd all be better ones. Does that sound good? That's John.
Yeah.
Done? So I'll make I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, all those in favor? John? Mitchell?
Yes. I go yes.
So maybe we'll we'll schedule a site visit for like five forty-five?
It's not gonna be as long a walk as today, so.
We'd meet at the site.
Yeah.
And we'd walk down.
You guys just tell me what day, just give me a few days to get the buildings up, give me a week or something to get it, yeah.
You can actually drive it.
Yeah, we'll drive down, right?
Yeah, you can drive right down, Paul.
So you're thinking next meeting?
Yeah. That work? That work for you, John?
Oh, anything works for me. I'm just thinking, if you have questions, or if you have anything, you're gonna do it right before the meeting?
Questions will come after meetings, the site visit is just to establish boundaries.
So we can take care of any questions, and we'll get in.
Exactly.
So if you say, if you could mark things, property boundary, and where the buildings would be, you know, roughly.
Yellow and fuchsia ribbons.
There you go, and what day is our?
Fourteenth.
Tuesday, and then we would have the public hearing. Here.
Yeah.
At night.
Okay. And that's a six thirty.
What else is there, Ominous? Maybe marijuana, maybe Manitoba.
Yeah.
So we could do John first.
Yeah.
And what time are you gonna meet me at? All right.
That work now?
Awesome.
Excellent.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. See you then.
We'll uh send out the butter list, same as as we sent out, sent out the CIPs.
Okay.
So that's it. So I think Paul said that you would draft the decision in the uh, so. And then send it to me, and then I'll send it to Paula. I don't know what there is to say, we. There's just the standard conditions of approval, I just.
Put that down in the notes for mine.
Yeah, instruction schedule, the inspection schedule. So there's, I don't think there's anything else. We were supposed to, did you tell Raymond about the marijuana issue?
Yeah.
So we're waiting to hear more.
Waiting for lawyers. Minutes. Slack word really likes to see up to eight minutes, and we're falling behind, so if you could just maybe.
I sent you some comments.
I did, I did uh apply those edits on the one that's that, he sent me, which was. For April ninth, our last meeting, and then Peter had edits for March twelve, which I applied, and I don't know that anybody looked at the March nineteenth, so.
Well, I I did not the most recent, no, I haven't, but the ones prior I had. But I I thought I would call. John was willing to another caller, I thought she did have comments, but did she already write some of those?
I did give me from her. I'm leaving out how the March twelfth, that early, that all of that.
Nickers didn't put on.
Yeah, I'm sure she hasn't been here.
Hey, Jack?
Yeah?
I I missed what happened with the uh marijuana dispensary, are they a no-show again, or?
No, they they wouldn't have showed, um. Well, I had raised, I had, in our town ordinance, it says that. Before they come to the town for approval, they have to get a conditional approval from the state.
Yeah.
So I raised that, and then then it then it became confusing about whether that was really required by state law or not. Then it became more confusing about what what did the town approve, or had approved marijuana. Medical marijuana establishments, could they, could they be? This guy owns several of them around the state, one issues, could. Could that sort of corporation have these medic- medical marijuana dispensaries around the state? Is that allowed under our ordinance, and anyway, Paula wrote to the town attorney to find out more. And so, and then there were some things missing from the application, like. They didn't put down the hours of operation or. Anything to do with parking or lighting or signage or anything, so is incomplete, so we decided to put it off to the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
I I assume it's more than five hundred people refill the elementary.
Yes, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we approved the last. Which is right there.
Right. How far do you think refill the elementary is? Thousand people.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So that's the story of that. And Ken Manitoba was gonna come back with some. Reconfigured plan and some other information.
Right.
Okay. People done? Are we done?
I'm good.
Okay, we're done, John.
Okay, is Paul all right?
Yeah. Well, she had her uh knee replaced, but then she got sick.
Okay. All right, well, thanks a lot. You guys have a good evening.
Good job.
Night.